...by the time they get around to doing that because they're not, they're on different code.
Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the knowledge, the training, to do your work here on earth. And Lord, we ask for favor, favor in the budgeting for this coming year. We ask for safety on the streets and the parks and the beaches for our young people particularly, and for the 100,000-plus students that are now enrolled in schools in Cameron County. Lord, protect them and watch over them. For the agenda today, Lord, we know that it's not a full or long agenda, but it's important, important to do what's best for all the citizenry of Cameron County. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did anybody sign up for a bunch of comments? Anybody wish to take anything out of order? If not, let's go ahead and judge it. We have a number of JP's here. Do they have it on you? Are we going to have a report on HAMR today?
Yeah, well, we're...
Yes?
That's where they're here.
Who's going to do the report on HAMR?
HAMR.
Dan.
Consideration of possible action by the HAMR Enterprise Justice P Software System. Going ones, going... Is somebody here? Who's going to make the report on the HAMR Enterprise Justice P Software System?
The JP's?
All of y'all? Are y'all making that? Right here? We'll put you up front, Judge. I know y'all...
Good gentleman, I'm doing the best. Judge, I'm going to give you a copy of that from Judge Benny Ochoa, who's not present. Good morning!
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge. Okay. Commissioners, good morning. I understand that Judge Garcia is on his way over here, and that's a letter that Benny Ochoa submitted to us. He wanted, he couldn't be here, but he wrote that to you guys so you could see it. My name is Judge Linda Salazar, and I went ahead and made a package of the Judges of the Peace Priority List. We had a committee meeting with the Honorable Ortiz, there's not a lot of, and there's Francis, and I'm not sure who else was present, and we all got together in a meeting first, and then we made a committee meeting. I was, I am the chairperson of that committee meeting, and that was to move EC Justice, what was the priority list, what we need to do, what we need to done first so we can get out of the way. So what I did is, everything that you see in green is a priority. The judges all agreed that they wanted our monthly financial report done immediately, to be completed by June. He, we also needed our state report that we do to the state, and that's also completed, has been delivered by the Office of HAMR. And you also see DPS, recognition of tickets, information from DPS, and that's also being done. All the ones in green are priority items that were, have been our first priority, which is the green, which is the first page. On the gray, everything that you see in gray are all the, all the items, all the things that we have on our EC Justice, and you can start with, you can see that we have civil, we have traffic, we have Class C's reductions, we have warrants, march rules already, we have most, multi-yellow of the civil completed, even with traffic. And then we have on the second page, you're going to see some yellow, and those on yellow are pending items that will be submitted by HAMR. Some of them have dates. On the last page, you see that, not on the second, second to the last page, they have dates, 8/22, they're highlighted in yellow for you. Those are the dates that Mr. HAMR should deliver all those items to our offices. And those, the quiet, all those on quiet are, if I collect those, are items, Armando, that needs to be...
...or add-ons from all the JP's courts that were implemented, getting EC Justice was first completed.
So, and then also on that front page right here, you'll see today, August 21st, and I repeat again, 85% has been completed. And we just received that, and I should be here to confirm that. What I got it from, am I correct in saying that?
Why has it taken so long, though? I mean, it's been like three years, you know?
Two.
Two years? No, I'm not, not...
It took over two years.
What I'd like to know is, is, does the JP feel where there's been problems in terms of implementing this program? I know it's not been any problems with y'all, but I just don't know why it's been such a delayed thing. It would seem to me that the program that y'all agree...
Well, Judge, let me say a little bit, and I'm not going to speak for the judges, I want them to say what they have to say, but as far as I'm concerned, when I started to office in 2005, I am pleased to say that my office do not make manual receipts no longer. Nobody makes manual receipts. Everything is done through these computers, and everything is processed through the computer. But, this is like making a cake, and you have to have the ingredients. And if you don't give that ingredients to Mr. HAMR and explain to him how to do that cake, he won't be able to produce what we want. And at one time, we weren't doing that for, I mean, all of them, we never got together in little committee meetings or getting together. Finally, we started saying, what's going on? How come we're taking too long? Even I started complaining to that. So that's why we started saying, you know what? I mean, we need to get together and say, you know what? We need to start giving him this gentleman this form and tell him why we need it. We just can't email him all the forms and not tell him the purpose of this.
One of the other things that came to my attention, if I'm correct on this, from what the auditor gave me, we apparently have a maintenance agreement with them for this system, where we've apparently already paid one payment of $15,000 and have a bill for a second payment of $15,000, yet we don't have a complete system yet. And some of those issues, I realize you can't answer because they're a different, they fall differently, but that helped bring up the whole issue of where we're at, why we haven't been, why the whole thing hasn't been completed in two and a half years, and how much have we spent? And is it proprietary for us? Is it proprietary for him? Is, you know, is he going to go out and market it someplace? I'm not sure we are aware of those issues.
The original agreement was this, a partnership between the Judges of the Peace and the software vendor to collaborate and bring together the work that they do in a software fashion that meets their needs and then produce something that would be marketable. The agreement was that we pay the maintenance agreement, we don't buy the software. In most cases, if you bought the software and then you pay 50% of that cost as annual maintenance, the agreement was we'll pay the maintenance agreement, and we're paying three stomachs of $15,000 each at a total of $45,000. The agreement was this, that we start with the JP software, and then we designed that, and we thought it was a natural place to start because there was no automation at all, except for those JP's using the OCA program, the Office of Work and Software, which the state had initially supported but discontinued its support. And then the idea was to move it up to the county courts and the district courts, and so that $45,000 would cover the JP's, county courts, and district courts. A lot of the basic work that is done in civil and criminal is applicable to the county courts and district courts. They need modifications in their procedures, but the idea is to be $45,000, whether we do it for JP's, county courts, or district attorney also, but since the timing of that software needed to be more imminent than the DA wanted to go with a module from a different company. That's something that the court approved. So, the natural progression of this will be to work on the county court at law level, next, and to work with the county clerk on his operations.
Well, since last Tuesday, and we had this discussion last Tuesday, as you will know, I met with some of the judges, and I came away quite concerned that there was no coordination, and I may be wrong, you know, I need more information as to who was giving HAMR the information that needed to be input. I mean, he couldn't just pull it out of the sky. And I'm thinking that there was a breakdown in that, in that coordination. I don't know why, but I feel that that, that happened. Am I...
Right. There were little committees formed going to provide the court costs and usual customary fines. I think Judge Sells are at that one. I think Judge Sanchez here dealt with traffic citations, is that correct?
Correct.
And then a few other, the other JP's had some tasks.
I can probably clear that up a little bit. In the beginning, when we came to, came up with the vision of putting this program together, we did so in anticipation of creating a better program than anything that's out there. And in order to do that, we needed to come forth and give our day-to-day operations and automate them. Well, the software company can do that, but we have to tell them this is what we need and how it needs to go. In the beginning, we dropped the ball in that we kind of gave it to the clerks, put them together, and for whatever reason, there was differences of opinion, and things kind of just slowed and were stagnant for a while. And as judges, I mean, we have all kinds of things going on, we kind of kept going, doing our judge thing, and the clerks weren't really progressing. So then there came a point, and Judge Salazar was talking about that, when we said, okay, we need to regroup, and rather than give it to the clerks, we're going to do it ourselves. At that point, I took on traffic intruency because that's mostly what I deal with in my court. So I started working on the modules for traffic intruency. What I mean by modules is that there are many software programs out there, but most of the programs are like your basic shell. If you want certain modifications, we're going to have to go in and make all those modifications. By going with this software vendor, what we were doing was creating all those modifications from the beginning. And what I mean by that is, we had the vision of electronic filing, traffic citations, okay? No company out there does that. No one had thought of it, and that's one of the main things we wanted to do. Why? Because rather than our clerks having to type in every citation that comes into the office, if it comes in electronically, we just saved a lot of time, and we don't have to have our clerks guessing, what does it say? What did the trooper mean here? What did the deputy, you know, what's the writing? I don't understand it. If it comes in electronically, we have all the information there, then that, that basically frees up a lot of time for the clerk. That also gives us all the information in the system to do receipts, automated receipts. It gives us information to do notice letters if they fail to appear, to generate warrants, to merge actual complaints being filed by the trooper. It gives us the ability to do the reports to the state, to the county. But, there was nothing out there, and it had to start from somewhere. Well, along with all that, there's also the, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right. Well, we need to take plea, a plea form for every person that's going to come in and plead to a citation. We wanted to have a written plea form, that way we have something in writing from every person. Along with that plea form, we also wanted a judgment. Those are new things that we never had before, but that takes time to create. The same thing with the truancies. With the original filing, you need the summons to notify the parent to be there. You would need an admonition, basically, a form of other written rights, a judgment form, community service form, and all these things we slowly developed, but it takes time, you can't do it overnight.
Dan, let me ask you a question. So, the forms, because of the fact that you were working on this, you started, not brainstorming, but putting together forms that didn't exist. Am I hearing correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a big difference from, well, you know, the forms were ready and you handed them to HAMR.
There are some forms that the state puts out in the JP CA book.
But you, but you were refining the system.
Right, we were going a step beyond that, and that's what takes time. And along with that, for each different section, you know, the JP Court has traffic, civil, small claims, inquest, administrative areas. I mean, we have a bunch of different areas that we have to deal with, and each module is going to take time, and that's kind of what has slowed us down. After I did the traffic intruency, well, every day that goes by, you kind of think of something new that comes up and you want to change it. Well, if I call over there and say, hey, we need to add this or change this, that means they stop working on the next phase and it kind of slows things up. So the other thing that we did was we got Paul to be kind of like the point person. Rather than 11 different courts calling over there...
It's still a long to get organized.
We would go through Paul so Paul could coordinate. If we have the same question being asked from four different clerks, it's better for it to go through Paul over and then get the response. So we've kind of refined what we've been doing, but it's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated.
Do you, do you, do you feel that now you're better organized and the process is going to move faster?
I think it has been moving faster. There was, we met a couple months ago, and we met with Mr. HAMR to kind of put pressure on him and pressure on ourselves. We said, look, September 30th, we either need something done, or we're going to have to go back to Commissioner's Court and either ask to end this program, or look for something new, or continue it, or whatever. And since then, there has been quite a bit of progress, but part of their progress depends on us because it's a cooperative effort. We can't just say, here it is, put it together, because the whole reason in this, putting this project together was, we were going to show them what we wanted and how we wanted it. Well, we've gotten to the point where we can do electronic filing of citations and truancy. In fact, yesterday, I think Judge Ortiz can probably talk to you a little bit more about that, they did a test filing on the truancy. What that means for the Brownsville Courts, BISD, is rather than the clerks having to type in all the information on each student, it's going to come in electronically. That frees up a lot of time. There's no other program out there that I know that does that, but if we're going to get there, it's going to take a little bit more time.
Did you want to say something, Judge?
During the implementation of this project, we had to deal with Senate Bill 1863 for the court collections process. We had to devote all our efforts to setting up the court, the JP Court collections. That was something that kind of delayed everything. It early on, to address our magistrate program, which did not exist, we had to implement a magistrate program. You know, those took a month or two each to implement and, you know, reconfigure the software, stop what we're doing, get the magistrate program in place, save the counties some money, and improve our administration of justice. And also, in putting in the court collections, puts us in compliance that they have Senate Bill 1863.
So there's different factors that have delayed this, is that what you're saying?
Right, and, you know, so because we're in the development of the software, we were able to slow one phase down and becoming compliant with another phase immediately and quickly grab.
What works on the statement that the magistrate system proved the administrative justice, and saves some money, too? We've got time constraints, judges. I know, I think, I didn't mean to stir up anything, I just said, why it takes so long? It's been a while, we hadn't gotten a report for a long, long time, and I think that Judge Sanchez's explanation and Mark's explanation, I think, pretty clears it up, as far as offense. And I, I think what the problem we had was that we didn't really understand what it had all involved in terms of all the different intricacies of what you do, and how that, like you said, has to be set up separately for each item that you get involved in, from truancies to tickets to, you know, civil case, et cetera, et cetera. And so it is, I can see where it would be extremely time-consuming to structure the whole program in the different categories that you're involved in, because, and that doesn't even include, you know, all the times people come see you, talk to you about, you know, the problem that the next attorney was giving, because they're throwing trash in the backyard, you know?
Perhaps there was too much optimism at the time this began, two and a half years ago, based on what information we were aware of for input, because I, best I recall, we expected to have this whole thing put in place in a year's time. And, you know, so we're looking at it two and a half years later, and it's 85% complete. I'm glad it's 85% complete.
I think we all were very optimistic. Looking forward to having it.
Getting it done.
We could work with it, but we really had no idea...
How complicated.
And that's what I'm saying.
How complicated it was going to be.
I don't know.
From one house to another, you have no idea how much stuff you have accumulated.
Yes, there is.
If I may, very briefly, I think Commissioner, Warden Commissioner, admire absolutely correct in questioning the timing of this thing. I don't know what the terms of the agreement was, was entered into, but I think it's been way long delayed. And Judge Sanchez and Judge Salazar are correct when they say that there's a lot of work. There's been a lot of effort, a lot of time by both the JP's and the clerks. I will tell you that I do know something by me sitting in on these other presentations that we've had from other vendors that are lobbying the county for their computer systems, JP systems, and that's with Net Data and with JPSC or something like that, I recall it talking, the acumen is, but those programs are actually, in my opinion, what I have observed, a lot more sophisticated. You know, I'm in favor of proceeding forward with HAMR. I think Mr. HAMR needs to dedicate some more resources. I don't think he's dedicated the resources for us to get this thing going a lot faster. I don't know, again, the terms of the contract, but I think we really need to light a fire under him. We have met with him previously, and he couldn't guarantee us if he was going to have this thing taken care of, or at least moved faster with it, but we really need to do that. I am in favor, again, of going forward with this project. I don't ever think that it's going to be as sophisticated as these other vendors' presentations. Now, you've heard presentations from Judge Salazar's court and the other clerks, then you've heard a presentation from Judge Gonzalez last week, and I can tell you that I have sat in both, and I am familiar with the HAMR project and with the other vendors' projects, or they're actually their systems. My clerks have sat in both, have been exposed to both HAMR and Net Data, and I tell you by far, and I've sat with my clerks and they've explained to me, that by far, Net Data and this other vendor are a lot more sophisticated, they're more efficient. If we can start to work to correct that, we really need to. I think the county and the computer department has really invested a lot of time in this and effort. We're on the phone constantly with them on a daily basis, my clerks are, and I don't think that HAMR is dedicating the resources that he should be dedicating to this project.
So you don't think, Judge, excuse me, you don't think that the delay, that one of the factors, and I'm sure there's always more than one factor involved when something isn't going right. In your opinion, you don't think that any, that one of the factors would be that as a group, you all were not communicating with them enough as to what you wanted?
Well, there were some questions about us not providing them forms. Judge Gonzalez, very, at the very onset of this project, provided a bunch of forms. What happened to those forms? I have no idea, but according to her, she delivered, and her clerk, chief clerk, Pat Garcia, delivered all these forms, whether they came from the Justice Court Training Center or from forms that we've already had, but they were all delivered to them, and what happened to them, we don't know. They should have been incorporated in this project already. So I don't know what's going on, but we really need to clarify it, and we either, we need to set some new timeframes. If not, we need to either the computer undertake this project, the computer department undertake this project on their own. I don't know if we're able to get out from under this contract, but if we need to, then that's what we need to do. I mean, they've already, they're working on it every day. I don't know if we can undertake something like this, or the county can on its, on its own, the computer department.
There's obviously would be a lot of difference if we went into a system that was already in place and working like Net Data, you said, or one of those other companies. That's more of a installation and training session.
And that is my reservations. I hate for the county to undertake that cost on a yearly and monthly basis for each court. It's very expensive, and that's why, the only reason I'm in favor of proceeding with this HAMR project, because of the cost involved, and we've already spent a lot of time and effort and investment.
And money.
And money.
A lot of money.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions if I can, you know. One is, and maybe this is more directed to the budget officer, what is the total amount of money that we have reserved in the budget from the technologies fee that is associated with the filings in the JP Courts?
I believe that this is last...
And remember, we started out, at the time we started with HAMR, we had $99,000 in that fund.
It was, yeah, almost $100,000, you know?
Right, but the fees were used to purchase computers.
For their offices, right.
And also for part funding of this project. I think that that fee has stopped for six.
No, the fee is...
I don't have anything but...
The fee is, the fee is a continual fee that is associated with every filing in your court.
It's been renewed by the state legislature, which scheduled to terminate last...
Yes, but it has not terminated, and we're still collecting the fee. My question is, how much money do we have in that fund after the expenditures that we've made for the technology we bought for their departments?
I can get back with you at this meeting on that.
Okay, and my second question is, does the software that we put in place in your offices have to be certified by someone at the state level?
No.
No? There's, there needs to be no state certification from any organization for any proprietary program?
They just need to comply with the court costs and the procedures. They need to follow the law, the statutes, and that's...
Right. So who is in charge of making sure that that happens? Would that be your office?
The JP's need to conduct their operations in the course of the statutes where they use a manual...
For example, and I'm going to give you an example, you know, on a fee that's collected to do a search for a ticket in a JP's office, you know, is that a fee that, I mean, is that a local option fee, or is that a, I mean, if I show up at your office and I don't have my ticket to pay from, and I ask you, well, do you have it in your records? And you do a search, is there a search fee that can be associated with that?
I don't, I don't see how you can do that. I would have to look it up.
You know, for the fee, and that's just one example, you know?
There is a $10 fee that can be applied for every traffic case for processing, but other than that, I'm not aware of any.
Not a search fee?
I have another question.
Okay.
I know that this is an extremely important issue, and I think that if any of the other judges have something to say, we need to hear you, even though it is taking a long time. But I have a question. You were talking about, you were talking about other systems that were more sophisticated, and no offense, no...
I've observed them, I've seen them, I've sat in the presentations.
Working.
And they're just a lot more efficient. My clerks, you have a lot of complaints about how slow it is, even being employed, trying to go back and forth into one screen to another.
I'm saying that there was advocate here. Do you actually know where they're being implemented, in some county, and have you checked that out? Because a presentation is different from actually being implemented. I'm finished with having it here in an hour.
And I'm not advocating Net Data, I'm not advocating any other vendor.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking.
But there are, I believe Net Data is being utilized in a bunch of counties, but the cost involved with it is quite a bit, so, you know, I would prefer to continue with HAMR, but we need to set some timeframes, and we need to hold him to them timeframes, and we need to really streamline it and make it a lot efficient, a lot more efficient.
Commissioner, how I can respond to your question, because one of the things that we were talking about since our last meeting, that we kind of put at September deadline, was Judge Sally, myself, and Judge Salazar are supposed to look at different programs. That's why we...
That's why we looked at Net Data, we looked at JP's.
Oh, I see.
So we looked at both, and I have gotten a list from Net Data of people that, Judge Sally sent me that list of people that are currently using it. And I've called several courts. I've gotten mixed reviews, most like it. But one thing I did find is, most of the ones that like it are people that before Net Data had no software program. Now, I haven't called the entire list, but I called about six courts, and for the most part, I've gotten good reviews on it. They, they do say that they have, you know, from time to time, or they have to call in for support, but support is available, and they get that support easily, but it's not difficult. The same type of issues that we run into, I think, with Easy Justice are happening.
I'm gonna ask one question, one more, Judge, and this is to Rudy. You know, in your observation of what's occurring with Easy Justice, are a lot of the issues that have come before us more of operational, or are they more of, like, communicational, from, you know, trying to get information to and from through our system at the county? Nick will answer, okay?
It's a combination of both operations.
That's a safe.
And were they operational, were, we can address them, we've addressed them, because if you, you had an opportunity to review the summary I sent in, there was some delicate communication issue.
Right.
It created a lot of frustration, especially for-
Well, that's why I asked the question, because I wanna make sure that we differentiate between the two.
Yes, exactly.
And those factors also, what, what software would have been placed behind communication?
That would have been a problem.
Yeah, the last thing here.
Well, you know, Judge, we're gonna venture through that. This is a close we've come, I've implemented the software like this, nine, until ninety-five, I'm back again, and I will still here again. We, this is the closest we've come to getting an operation, I just want it in the right direction, and we'll go in the right direction, I believe.
You know, if this is working for y'all, from my, from my position, is if this is working for y'all, we're almost there, you wanna finish it out, you know, there's a, there's, if, if we've got a better system and-
And we, due to the fact that we came into an agreement with Mr. Hamer, at his deadline in the end, he is towards the end of September, I think that was at the time that we need to bring up this issue, not at this juncture.
But the reason we brought it up, and we brought it up, I brought it up-
Several times.
Because it was supposed to have been done in a year, you know, and here we are, two and a half years later. And y'all are the ones suffering from it, because you're the ones that need the system to operate with. That's why we went into the whole deal. And it was only one office that had a software system working, no one else did. Hopefully, this is what you need, and it's gonna work for you, but let's get Mr. Hamer on the ball, and let's get it done.
And I think we have, due to the fact that we have given him till the end of September, but I think that we need to comply with that agreement before we go any further. As far as I'm concerned with the Easy Justice system, I have discussed the issue with my clerks, due to the fact that they're the ones that are utilizing the system. I will utilize it occasionally, but not as much as they will. But they're very happy with it. And if you consider the fact that if indeed we are at eighty-five percent into the system, considering that we've got fifty more percent to go, I think it would be great to continue with it, if my clerks are happy with it. That's my standpoint on it.
Well, and that's the point I was trying to make, Judge, you know, y'all are out there, not out, y'all are willing to have to deal with this, not out there. From my perspective, from my perspective, you know, let's see where it goes, if y'all are all right with this thing, you know, at the end of the time that you've set, and we'll just, you know, continue with it, as far as I'm concerned. If you've got problems with it, and we can figure out a way to get out of it, I just, I'm just talking to Mr. Burge right now about some of the legal aspects of the contract and how we would get out of it, then that's something that we'll look at. I think, you know, we raised the question, you know, why did it take so long? Because it's taken so long. And I think that's a legitimate question to ask. I think Judge Wise brought up the fact that, that, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not in a situation where there's no one else out there, you know. There's other, other, other options that we've got available, perhaps options that are even better than this option. So if it doesn't work with Mr. Hamer, then we'll pursue those other options and see how we can get this done as quickly as possible. We've got the additional issue out there that needs to be resolved, two more issues that are out there. One is the collections issue that we talked about, and we need to see how this works into that. And I know that, I had conversations earlier this week with Alora about, about the need to get us where the state requires us to be in terms of collections, because of the ramifications for the county, if we are not able to get there and implementing the system that the state requires us to implement. And I know that figures into this whole computer system, no matter how, no matter how one would look at it, it's going to figure into it. And then the additional thing that's out there, that I don't know how that would work into it, but I'm sure it would, is this thing that y'all came to us a couple of weeks ago that Judge Wise had brought to my attention, which was the whole warrant officer issue and the need to collect those bad, those old, old fines that are sitting out there that never have been collected, or to get people to come forward for the tickets that they've never have come forward on, and how that works into this as well. So y'all, y'all are faced with some big technological challenges that has an enormous impact upon how you do your business in your court, and how much revenues are coming into the county, which we rely on to balance our budget every, in a year. So that's why I think that everybody needs to be happy with this. You need to be happy with this. This man who has to generate, has to tell us what, how much money we got to spend's gotta be happy with that. The computer department that has to implement this program has gotta be happy with it. You know, the court collection system that the state is mandating upon us has gotta be happy with it, and all five of us have to be happy with it as well. So come back to us at the end of September, let us know where y'all are at, and just keep up the good work and try and get this thing done. Thank you.
You know, my intent was to give you a tool to help ease the operation of your office and make it easier for yourselves and your clerks to do business in a more efficient way.
Commissioner, we, we have pre-sold that, but I think that we as a group are trying to find out what's in the best interest to each and every one of our offices, at the same time, taking your decision into mind as to the costs, because of the fact that if we give up this particular project and into another one, we're talking about-
It'd be big money.
Big money, having it implemented from the get-go. So we, I think we need to finish it out.
Well, I think your work is gonna pay off, it appears.
I think it will, too.
Yes, I think so.
But we need to give this, finish out, pan out the way we hope it's gonna pan out, and then we will come back and give you the decision then.
And I think the communication has to be at a high level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I just appreciate that.
If the court has just a couple of minutes, I'd like to give my clerk an opportunity to address the court. She's never been in a scenario of this type, and I know she's very afraid to-
Well, come on up here, come on up here.
I kept, I kept seeing her shake her head.
As you say, you can hear it from the horse's mouth, because she's the one that pushes it. This is Belinda, we call her Bibi.
Hi, Bibi.
Bibi, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm ready to go back to work.
She wants to go back to work.
Yes.
She's directly involved with the true innocent cases, and the first side is worse with her.
Give us your impression.
I'm excited. We did a test run yesterday. Today, we're gonna continue. I just, it's a lot easier, they do all paperwork, I mean, all the inputting, and we're just ready to print out, select the date we're gonna have the court, and it's gonna be a lot of time.
Saving you time.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that, that's why we went into it, to benefit y'all, because we knew the way everyone except one was doing it manually is just not efficient. And our concern was, you know, to get this done a lot sooner than it's been done.
Judge Gonzalez has been itching to say something, I know.
He's standing patiently.
Let me be the last one to give the last word.
He almost drove the farthest.
On behalf of Precinct Seven, Place One, and I believe I can speak for Place Two, we are very happy with the program that Easy Justice system. And I can tell you that we hired a new girl, and she started a week ago. And she is there by herself in Judge Sanchez's office today, and she started this week by herself, and she can, has already taken payments, she is entering into the computer. So whoever named it Easy Justice, I believe, I don't know, that speaks for itself. What I, this program had already started when I came in a year and a half ago, just like Judge Salasada. And I do not wanna go into another program where we're a year and a half down the road asking for the same thing. So if we're eighty-five percent complete, I think that Hamer could get on the ball and try to complete that program as soon as possible. Because if we get to the point to where we do away with Hamer and get another system out there, we'll start all over again, and we could be a year and a half, two years down the road doing the same thing we're doing.
Uh, Judge, when you said, and she's there by herself, so you're saying that it's customer-friendly, I guess?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
User-friendly.
User-friendly.
Very user-friendly. Okay, thank you, Judges, I appreciate it.
One second. Last week, you requested a license and weight collection question.
Number, oh, yeah.
Give everyone a copy of that, and I just wanna tell you that we printed this out from Easy Justice. I want to, I want to be sure we did that. And you can see the total amount paid from March two thousand and five when I started to the present is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and two.
How much of this do we get?
I will give you that information.
Here you go. You can get it.
Because that's money that we didn't have access to last time around.
That's correct.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Yeah, we need to make sure we certify that. Thank you, Judge.
Anything? I'm the presiding judge on the warrant division. Okay. I'll speak to Mr. Lopez, we've been in constant communication here last week, and we will come back and let you know exactly what we're, what we're doing with this program. But we have a warrant division. I spoke to Mr. Lopez, my counselman, and he committed to every guy, and they're committed to the programs. Okay? Thank you. We'll come back, we'll go and give you more information.
Judge, I'd like you to acknowledge, my commissioner, and I may have seconded my commissioner, Amaya, for a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, both motion carries. I'm gonna jump to item number ten, consideration and authorization to hold a public hearing for the purpose of discontinuing or banning a portion of Track forty-seven, Ward Precinct number four, described in bottom five thirteen, five hundred and thirteen, page three ninety-three, and the deed records said, "Warrant is located in subdivision G, share nineteen, as proven to San to Grand, Cameron County, Texas." Motion to, going to public hearing, again, I may have seconded my commissioner, Amaya, for a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, both motion carries. We're not a public hearing. Who's first, Pete? Who's gonna talk about this? You, you, Commissioner?
No, they could.
We'll do it.
We didn't hear any opposition to the-
Which one are we?
Ten.
And no opposition to that? Is anybody here to talk on it?
John, do you wanna say something? I know that he's, he's in favor of it.
It is that, we basically did this a year ago, and it turned out it was a speck of it that was unseen.
And your name, just for the record?
My name's John Whalen.
Okay, John Whalen. And you're speaking in favor of the request?
Yes, I submitted paperwork. It was done a year ago, and it turned out a speck was not included, and this is just the finishable extension.
All right, good. There are motion to call public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second, we have a debate, a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, I have both motion carries. Eleven, consideration and authorization to adopt an order to discontinue and abandon a portion of Track forty-seven, Ward Precinct number four, described in bottom five thirteen, page three ninety-three, as deed records said, "Warrant located in subdivision G, share nineteen, as proven to San to Grand, Cameron County, Texas." Motion to adopt the order. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second, to that motion. Second by Commissioner Benavides, second, for a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, I have both motion carries. All right, budget amendment ten, nine, nine, transitive, there are more schedules, and questions, concerns, comments, complaints, and motion to approve by Commissioner Benavides, to second to that motion.
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, I have both motion carries. Minutes, for August first, two thousand and six, regular meeting. Questions, concerns, comments, complaints. There are motions to approve by Commissioner Benavides, to second to that motion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, see, tonight, I have both motion carries. Claims?
We have two claims, check number one, six, five, six, three, one, to commercial billing service, the amount of two hundred and ninety-one cents. And second, check number one, six, five, six, three, two, this is a loan from Fund fifteen to Fund seventy-one, money, rest, real relocation, project ten thousand five hundred. I'm working with Mr. Supulga to endorse all the partners, and we should repay that loan in a matter of days.
Okay. Was there any public comment? Huh?
No, no, no public comment.
Nobody sent?
Yeah, I, I mentioned that.
All right. There are motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Tamayo, second, Commissioner Whalen, any for a discussion, all those in favor, see, tonight, I have both motion carries.
I turn it in next to David, Judge, on one, six, five, four, five, five.
I'm gonna jump over to item number seven. I just noticed the city manager for South Piver Island here. Consideration and possible action on the construction of a public safety helicopter landing site on South Piver Island. Jerry?
Yes, sir. Okay, I see. This is an item that, that we were approached by the city of South Piver Island a few months ago on. They've been working on trying to find a location for a public safety helicopter on the island. There's just not very many good places because of the, the limited amount of real estate and the overhead lines, which create an obstruction for the helicopters to land. And I'm talking with them, and I believe I've visited with the judge, it came up that we have a slab at East La Banca Park that was once a pavilion, and many of you may remember that. We'd like to look at using that slab to put a public safety helipad there, because it would save time, and it would also, of course, save a lot of money in the process.
And save lives.
Of course, being the ultimate goal.
And, and just for the record, just to make it clear, this is only for emergency landing.
Exactly.
I know that, that, that people have approached us, and the island about making it available for other helicopter landings, and I think that the consensus among us is that we think that that would be an inappropriate use for that, but that because there is a great need to be able to get emergency air care into the island for people who have, you know, have gotten into trouble in the water, or, or, you know, all sorts of problems, you know, people having heart attacks. And, and we just need a place where a helicopter can come in, land quick, pick somebody up, and go back. I know that we're looking at a site also in the Buena Vista.
That's right, and also Royal City.
And at Royal City as well, adjacent to the-
Right, fire station.
To the fire station that's on the agenda. So that's, that's why we, we, we-
Well, there is air service to the island right now.
Uh, yes, but there's not, there's not a-
There's not a helipad?
Yes.
But I just wanna make sure and clarify the fact that there is air service to the island.
Yes.
The helicopter does land on an area that usually they have to close the, the road for, but it does do it? You're back there? You might wanna address that, because I don't wanna allow people to think that, that there is no service as we currently speak. There has been service to the island for as long as we've had a helicopter. Right?
Commissioner, that is correct. We typically land the copter at the convention center. We need to pull the fire engines out, particularly at night, and block off the side, as you described.
Right.
But yes, sir, we are getting the SDEC helicopter in and out at this time.
And as I understand, that would keep on, you know, that would be a site for the northern end of the island, and this would be for the southern north, because, you know, we do have a traffic issue, you know, we have one south main road.
Right.
It's sometimes difficult for the ambulances to navigate that, especially during an emergency. So I, I think that islands can continue going to use the north side landing site, and this would give them another option and one with more capability. And I can get into that in a little bit, about, you know, what, what the island's proposing to help us by putting their, particularly, glass open instrument, access to a weather station, navigational aids. Of course, we'll put the markings on there, so it'll be a much safer facility and much easier for the helicopters to land in, in a rarer range of conditions than we have right now.
But I'm glad that you have it on both sides, on the north side of the, of the island too because, you know, depends on, I, I don't know, there hasn't been a study made on this where accidents occur more often or where...
Well, uh, you know, there, there are probably, I don't know if there's been a study, but just from my experience, what I've seen, I mean, the two areas where you see the most need for the helicopter have been the, at the southern because of the things that happen on the beach, obviously, and then, you know, traffic accidents, things like that, and then the medical cases are probably distributed throughout. Dewey may know a little more about that.
Well, like you said, it's the ultimate is to save lives. I think it's a great idea.
Well, that, that actually, Commissioner, is the nice thing. Right now, what we've done is we've got a lot of preliminary work just to see if this is a feasible proposal. We talked to the cops in emergency care. They performed a study of the area to make sure it was safe, that they could operate the helicopter, that it was suitable. In fact, they expressed their support for the project in a letter to the judge a few weeks ago. We also met with the Parks Advisory Board last week to discuss this project, and the Parks Advisory Board found that this would be a public use of the parkland, and of course, expressed their, uh, their desire to see the project move forward as well. Uh, and, and we've also done a few other things. We called the city board as well just to make sure since this isn't a city limits board as well, that they wouldn't have any injections to, to this, or they don't have any ordinance that would, would create a problem. Mr. Garcia said they didn't. And of course, we also have a...
Are they still in the city?
This part's still...
It's in the...
It's in the ETJ. I don't think it's in the city.
They told me this part was still in because it's on the very southern of the park. Uh, they were, they were looking at, but that's, that's what I'm...
It's all in court, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what we were told, so that's why I did that.
It's in their ETJ. Has FAA been...
No, that's, that's, that's another step. And we're, we're, right now, we're just asking for the court to approve us to proceed with this. And really, the next step that we need to do before we do anything else is we need to have an engineer look at this site, verify that it will, you know, what is the weight that it will hold, what measures are needed, if there are any repairs are needed to the slab, to, to know what the cost of those will be if those are needed. And then, once we find that out satisfactory, then we can go forward and approve and get the town set up part of it. We've already been working on one, there's a draft version that's been prepared that she's working on. Uh, so we'll be ready to move forward once that, that testing is done. But that's the next step really, is to test the slab. And we have to, to, I, I believe Remy had, had found some money.
Oh, that's interesting. Yes, Remy?
See, uh, when we were discussing this, uh, source of funding, uh, the, the county treasurer just recently made a report regarding the, that the interest that's been earned on the county's deposits. And, uh, with the windfall of having, uh, some of the landmark money returning to the county, there is, there are some funds that are above what was budgeted in certain line items that would cover the cost of, of this particular thing.
And that, you're talking about also whatever the cost might be, which we need to figure out on the lighting?
Yeah.
If it was to go there for...
Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, if it goes up for... I, I...
Okay. It's a fairly, it's a fairly congested area, so we need to make sure that we get FAA clearance on this.
That's, that's one of the steps that we've already done in Project Outlying, and one of the things that we need to do. Although, this, the reason why we, we chose this site is there are relatively few, in fact, very few overhead obstructions, particularly in the path that the helicopter takes to land, which is a solid approach.
Do we know whether or not any RVs would have to be relocated or re...
They wouldn't have to be relocated. There are a couple, and I know you're short on time, but there are some pictures, but I don't want to travel out and project them, but there, it's...
I'm sure you'll get back to us with all that.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple. There are four that are just on the edge of, uh, the, the area that the pavilions would be on, there's four spots that, that they hear the helicopter. It wouldn't necessarily interfere with the helicopter's ability to land there, but they would also know that there's something going on.
What we talked about with Javier's, he notified those people before they were moving in, or, you know, when they, when they ran those slips, saying, here's a helicopter here, it's used infrequently, uh, but just to make sure...
But if you need it, it's going to be right there.
Exactly. And from what, to tell this...
A lot of your...
Have the, the service time, they have a flight safety, uh, company come with them. I believe it's called Metro Aviation. They looked at it and said there were no safety hazards to the, to the recreational vehicle by helicopter landing.
All right, thank you, Jared.
So the motion would be for them to go forward on it?
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides, for a discussion. Did you want to talk with me? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Does that include us engaging the engineer to, uh...
Yeah, they're saying go forward.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And keep us, keep us posted.
Well, Judge, they say when you've gotten to the bottom line, you should shut up and sit down. But I will say that, uh, there, there seems to be something in the wind or the water these days that's making things much better around the Laguna Madre area, what with the recent joint meeting of, uh, our, uh, board and the commissioners of Port Isabel. I see this as another major step forward. Judge, I want to thank you personally, uh, for the initiative that you've assisted with here, uh, for the excellent performance and conduct of Jared, and, uh, for the good folks in the park system, Javier and Joe. And, and we're very grateful for it. I think it's going to be a major benefit to, uh, all concerned in that area, as particularly given the fact that we have so many emergencies in that immediate area that really require people to be expedited out. And so I just want to thank you very much for your support on this project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's in my state. I have both motion carries. Okay, um, and do you have, uh, on this item number nine, is the architect here, Simon Chan? Consideration and approval of six colors direction for the County County of Royal City, law enforcement, fire substation, and family learning center? Is everybody happy with that? Right here. Okay. Uh, Javier Garcia, the architect is in Houston. I don't really know. Uh, he provided some samples that were mailed to our office, and, uh, he has made certain color selections.
The other guy's right, there's no burn on it.
No, I asked for a room personally, but, uh...
So...
Yeah, nice, right off. On the long foot already.
Uh, the color selected here is this one in the upper left, which is a mess about, and because of the light here, I'm going to go ahead and pass this around.
Yeah, why don't you first? I had a concern that, I said, gosh, it's going to be so blah, but go ahead with your presentation, and they'll see where you'll have some color tools.
You know, that, that color fills the entire top around the perimeter of the building. And, uh, up at the very top, uh, you have some section of metal wall panel, uh, which is going to be an almond color. I don't have the chip, but it's this color here, and, uh...
Pretty neutral.
Is, is kind of a white.
Off-white.
Off-white. And the trim, the doors, the downspouts is, uh...
I tried, I tried, I tried to orange, David.
The ceiling tile is, is just a typical standard crucible tile. Uh, the base is a beige, the tile is beige. Uh, the interior doors, another that, you know, uh, he selected a valley oak color. And, uh, if I can, I'll pass this around.
Yeah.
They already started construction, right? They're pretty far along. Ready on that? Construction has started. Uh, the pad is built up. Uh, anticipate getting ready to put the slab in the next, uh, we're going to have two weeks, and, uh, it should move along pretty quick after that slab is up. Uh, one of the items that is probably going to have lead time associated with it is the CMU. Therefore, we, uh, you know, we want to make sure the contractor can get going with the color that gets approved. Okay, thank you, man. Y'all all right with that?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Would you approve?
Judge, this is cream. I think it's, it's very good.
Yeah, yeah. You know what? Bring that thing back.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's in my state. I have both motion carries. Thank you. Okay, uh, item number five, um, fiscal, uh, discussion of the fiscal year two thousand and six, two thousand and seven budget.
Just to, uh, separate, same as the ones in the past, um, as far as revenue to expenditures, what, what I have done is, uh, for the tax rate, uh... uh, the revenues based on the current tax rate, but splitting the tax rate to where the, the Roden Bridge Fund is, is balanced, uh, at the present time. Uh, the general fund, uh, shows, uh, in excess right now of the nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and ten, uh, based on the current expenditures that I have, uh, within this book.
The revenues are based on what, ninety-four percent?
At ninety-four percent collection rate, yes. Uh, and with the total being the same current tax rate as, as this fiscal year. Um, the, uh, expenditures do not include, uh, at the present time, the, any cost of living increases on according to positions. Uh, it's, it's basically the, the same as, as what I presented in the past. Uh, there is, uh, one correction that I'd be, uh, sending to you as one of the pages, uh, for the, uh, community services, and that was on the action that the port to Black Sweden converting a part-time position to a full-time. Uh, that's not reflected in here, so I need to make that change, and I'll submit that to you. Uh, at the bottom of the list, uh, is, of course, what, uh, the requirements would be to the Roden Bridge Fund, uh, and to the general fund for the three percent increase. Uh, within the park system and within the bridge system, there are funds set aside for that, uh, already within, in, in the operational budget. Uh, if, if the court approves that, then the money would be distributed to the salaries and the coordinating, uh, uh, fringe benefits. Um, I attached to that, uh, on the second page, just by, uh, a, a department listing of some of the, uh, the increases that are, that are noticeable, or there are substantial increases to those individual departments, and it, just a real, real brief description as to what, what that is. Uh, so that way, when you look at the individual departments in totals, and if there's an increase, what, what, what was the cause of that for this next fiscal year, what's being, uh, recommended. Uh, most of those, uh, were items that, um, had already been approved this fiscal year, which is the ones with all the new positions, where it does say new position alone, new deputy, or, or a new clerk, those were approved this fiscal year and just being, uh, included in the next fiscal year's budget. Uh, we're scheduled to have a public hearing next, uh, Tuesday on the tax rate, and then again on September fifth. Uh, there'll be a public hearing on the budget on, uh, for the recommended budget on September twelfth, uh, between, uh, the final adoption to be September the nineteenth. So between now and then, uh, the changes that the court would, which is to make and can be implemented and included into the budget for next fiscal year. Um, I know this was handed out Friday, and there's a lot of information, uh, on line item detail, and there's still, uh, items that I am looking at, especially in relation to the, to the juvenile, uh, department, with the, the, the increases that were being requested by them, and, uh, trying to see somewhere in the end if there were increases that were made, but, uh, there may be some additional, uh, funds, hopefully, that we may be able to allocate to that. And plus, if there's, uh, any funds available, there, there are some positions that we'd really report, uh, maybe to consider for building maintenance and vehicle maintenance.
Can you make sure, let us know, um, in the juvenile budget, if, if we had some funds and that other fund that you were talking about, that they were paying out of positions out of dual funds, remember?
Correct.
So, you know, let us know how much of, how much of it will be offset with that particular fund you were talking about.
Correct. Yeah, within the, uh, within the juvenile department and, and the health departments are the larger ones for they, but they do have a lot of grants, uh, so salaries and expenditures get split. Uh, on, on some of the grants, I don't see them because they come directly through the court and get approved, and, and I don't track them. Uh, so when they send me, uh, during the budget process, as far as salaries, they'll send me the breakdown of the salaries and then where they're getting paid from. Excuse me. And that's where I tie it back into, well, this is how much the general fund's going to require, and if there's an increase, uh, associated with that. Uh, but if there's changes that go on through the years, uh, during the fiscal year to those grants, uh, I don't see the, the total repercussion until the, the end of fiscal year.
But you'll be able to give us that information?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? There are motion to approve, like second, uh, Benavides, second, next mission, we're asking for discussion. All those in favor, it's in my state. I have both motion carries. Six, consideration and authorization to exempt all future progress through contact with high purchasing, and, uh, ETC, uh, go with the prosection, two, six, two, four, eight, four.
Any questions, Judge? I can address them.
So tell us what your priority is.
Why, why are we doing this?
Uh, two reasons, Mister. The, uh, there are two state laws that are inconsistent. Uh, they're both referenced in the order. First of all, you have, uh, in the government code, section twenty-two, fifty-four point zero, zero, one, is referred to as the Professional Services Security Act. It defines, uh, the government unit to include counties, and it specifically states in zero, zero, three, that you're prohibited from bidding for professional services. You're prohibited from competitive bidding. And, and it points out that the, that for professional services, you should, the, the primary thing you should be looking are, are what's reflected in the order. I actually took that out of the act. The quality of the person, uh, their, their competence, their qualifications, and a fair and reasonable price by any applicable standards. That's actually taken out of the act. Now, the reason this is necessary is because the local, the County Purchasing Act, found in Local Government Code two, six, two, uh, point oh, two, three, and following, is just the opposite. It requires that for all services that you do competitive bidding, unless you exempt it. And it gives the commissioners court authority to exempt by order professional services. There are about ten items, there are ten items under oh, two, four, that you can exempt. I'm only exempting, asking you to exempt professional services to prevent you from having to do it every time.
Oh, I see.
And that brings us into compliance with, with the other statute.
But if we want to go out for proposals, we have our option all the time.
Once you exempt it, you can do proposals. You can't do bids.
Right.
Because it prohibits bids.
Yeah, we can do bids.
But you can do proposals, request for qualifications, or direct negotiations. You just don't have to put it on the agenda every time. And incidentally, this was suggested to me by the, uh, the attorney general's office to do this.
All right, there's a motion, Judge. Motion by Commissioner Benavides, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
You're doing your job.
Okay, consent items, item number, did I get all the consent items? Yes, sir. Items, uh, number twelve through, uh, twenty-six, and then file item number twenty-seven. Remy told me that, uh, uh, they're asking to table item number seventeen for right now, and then, uh, and then the recommended committee for the debris management, um, is Tom Hutchins, is on, on number twenty-five. Tom Hutchins, Javier, and Pete's approval. And any questions?
Is the constable here on, out of eighteen?
Yes, sir, he is.
He's sitting there? There he is.
There he is. You're okay with this? Any other questions?
It's a volunteer, right?
Complaints on any other consent items or travel items? No more, Judge. Want you to approve. Thank you, Benavides, second, Mr. Commissioner, asking for discussion, all of the pair of signal by state and I. All right, both motion carries. Motion to one executive session.
Second.
Commissioner Benavides, this is my question, Mike, any further discussion? All of the pair of signal by state and I. All right, both motion carries. We're not in executive session. So, move, Mr. Diego, we call it to 551.072. We see it, the 23rd section, 551.072. Guessing what? 28, 29A, possible action on control of official court of your conference concerning issues related to possible action with the Dancy Building Innovation Project. But what do we need to do on that? Denial, and it's already decided.
On the, on the Dancy Building? I, I'd make a motion to approve an agreement to extend the, the substantial completion date.
No, no, no. 28, 28A.
28.
Move, acknowledge the lease.
The sign?
Yeah, acknowledge the report.
Lease of a sign.
Acknowledge report, okay.
Confer and sign.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Tamayo, for discussion, all of the pair of signal by state and I. All right, both motion carries. Item number 29B, possible action on, concerning acquisition of land for West Road Project. Nothing was discussed, motion to table by Commissioner Saman. Commissioner Glass, any further discussion? All of the pair of signal by state and I. All right, both motion carries. 29C, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of land for proposed park in La Paloma. Motion to acknowledge the signing of the agreement by Commissioner.
Second.
Tamayo, second, Commissioner Glass, any further discussion? All of the pair of signal by state and I.
Aye.
All right, both motion carries. Item 29D, possible action on control of official court of your conference concerning whoever resolved waste collection contract about the issue of non-compliance or, or default on a matter which a duty of the attorney to the governmental body and the tax discipline and rules of professional conduct to statewide, taxes clearing conflicts with this chapter. What action do you need on that?
All I need is authority from counsel to proceed to discuss an executive session.
Is there a motion to that?
So moved with the addition of denial of $896,000 due.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All of the pair of signal.
Aye.
Aye.
The action that you took on item D, I don't believe that the way that's done complies with open meetings law. If you're taking an action in open session, you have to say what that action is.
I disagree.
I just wanted to go on record because that's been done quite a few times and the law says you have to take the action in exec, in an open session, you have to say what action you're taking.
May I address it, Your Honor? If you look at the case law under an exemption for 571, what that is for, when you talk about, for local government code, or government code 551.071 exemption, that's different than all other exceptions because that's for attorney-client privilege. It clearly recognized in all the case law under that, but if you have to come out and say what it is your counsel's gonna do, then you've destroyed the, the, the privilege between attorney and client. You do not have to do that. Now, you come out and take a vote, and you can take a vote just acknowledging that what is what was discussed in, in, in the executive session is, is to be done by the attorney. And for instance, if we had, if we were trying to settle a case and we had to come out and say, well, we authorized you to pay up to $100,000, but try to settle it for 50, guess what? See, we've had to discuss that in open session whereas the other side does not have to. So, clearly, in fact, one of the cases, the San Antonio Appeals Court has even said that for items considered under 571, the attorney-client privilege, 571.071, that that is as though we're not even in a meeting. That's for purposes of the attorney to talk to the client. Okay? So, I clearly disagree with you under 571.071. The rest of them, you're correct.